Well, good evening, everyone. And welcome to our November 20th, 2019 City Council Meeting. We have to divert from our regular agenda tonight because we had an item come to our attention after the regular posting of the agenda. So this matter may be placed on the agenda for consideration pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 Subsection B. So let me give you a little background of which I have to do in order to place this item on the agenda. The Brown Act generally prohibits any action or discussion of items not on the posted agenda. However, there are three specific situations in which the legislative body can act on an item not on the agenda. When the majority decides that there is an emergency situation as defined for emergency meetings. Number two, when two-thirds of the members present or all the members, if less than two-thirds, are present. So if less than two-thirds, if we have three members here, all three have to vote for this, but since we have five, we have to have at least four votes in order to take this action. To determine that there is immediate action and the need to take action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the agenda being posted. This exception requires a degree. Cannot be considered under this provision if the legislative body or the staff knew about the need to take immediate action before the agenda was posted. And after I read all this, you're going to be really disappointed when I read the agenda item. A new need does not arise because staff forgot to put the item on the agenda or because an applicant missed a deadline. And number three, when an item appears on the agenda of and was continued from a meeting held not more than five days earlier. The discussion, the deadline to apply for Senate Bill 2 Planning Grant Program Funds is in November 30th, 2019. Staff was unaware of the need for the City Council Resolution until advised by the grant writer after the City Council Agenda was posted. Staff is requesting the immediate action. Adoption of the resolution and need to take action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the agenda being posted. And, um, and this item is to gain additional funds, the City Council is eligible for $160,000 in additional funds for the Planning Grant Program. And staff is proposing that we allocate the funds to the General Plan Update 2040 Program Environmental Impact Report, EIR, to help streamline residential building permits. So that's what we are asking the council to consider so we can apply for $160,000 of additional money. And without the action, and in this case, four votes, then we won't be able to apply. So, uh, what say, excuse me. So at this time, what I would like to do is I would like to call this meeting to order of the November 20th, 2019, uh, meeting of the Los Banas City Council. And Chief, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
No.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, roll call.
Faria.
Here.
Johnson Santos.
Here.
Jones.
President.
Lewis. Volta.
Here, we do have a quorum. Okay, now I would like to ask the City Council by a motion and a second, and then we'll take a roll call vote just to be sure, if they would like to approve placing of Resolution 6160 authorizing the application receipt of Senate Bill 2 Planning Grant Program Funds on the agenda. Do I have a motion? Let's see here, Mrs., see, why is this not going back? Here, let's try this. No. Bear with me here, this isn't going, this thing isn't moving back over here to the other thing. Okay. All right, we'll just do it manually. All right, Mr. Santos? Oops, on, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 60, sorry.
Okay, place it on the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to place on the agenda Resolution Number 6160.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Faria.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been motioned by Johnson Santos and second by Faria to place Resolution Number 6160 authorizing application receipt of Senate Bill 2 Planning Grant Program Funds on the agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Faria.
Yes.
Johnson Santos.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lewis. Volta.
Yes, and it will be placed on the agenda as the new 10, moving, uh, item 10 to item 11 and then item 11 to item 12. So adjournment will be number 17 now instead of number 16. Right here. Okay. All right. So let's go on to the approval of the new agenda. And do I have a motion, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do have a motion, but I also have a correction that I'd like to make to one of our regular agenda items, and that's item number eight on page one of the background information. I believe it's the last sentence on November 6th, 2019, the City Council approved ordinance number blank, which among other things will be reducing the number of commissioners from five to seven, and I think it's supposed to be seven to five. So I just want to make that correction for the record.
Okay.
And with that, I'll make an approval.
Mrs. Lewis, what I'd like to do is approve that when that agenda item comes up, with that correction.
Is that the way it's supposed to be done?
It can be done that way, yes.
Well, I thought since we were approving the agenda that anything needed to be corrected.
Well, we're gonna prove, so that's item eight?
Item, it's item number eight.
Okay, we can, we can then make the correction when item eight comes up.
That'll be fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the new items that have been submitted for consideration.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay, we're not, we're not working correctly tonight with this thing. Could we have maybe, uh, our tech come out here and, and see if he can get it back to the, let's try this. Okay, wait a minute, got it, it just came back, it just came back, fantastic. Okay, so I have a motion from Lewis and second by Jones for the approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Let's go on to public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the Council Chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. If you have a cellphone, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and bring it back to council level. Let's go on to item six, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And tonight we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows, warrant numbers 218869 to 219050 and the amount of $512,660.57 minutes from the November 6th, 2019 City Council Meeting, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there any City Council member that wishes to remove a consent agenda item for discussion? If not, do I have a motion? Mr. Santos?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Do I have a second? Mr. Faria?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's a motion by Johnson Santos, second by Faria to approve the consent agenda as stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item seven, public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 7A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of amending the business license renewal fee. Item 7A1, City Council Resolution Number 6158, reducing the annual renewal commercial business license fee. Okay, and we're gonna, do we have a presentation or?
No, just a report.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So the item before you tonight is a request to adopt a resolution to reduce the annual renewal commercial business license fee within the user fee schedule. As you may recall, back in September of 2019, the City Council held a public hearing and adopted Resolution Number 6131, adopting the city's cost allocation plan and the comprehensive user fee study, which included the user fee schedule. Included within the user fee schedule was a breakdown of all of the costs of services that the city provides to the users within the community, and those range from permits to licenses, to administrative citations. And within that fee schedule, there were a few fees. All of the fees showed at least 100% of the actual cost of the services and what it costs the city to provide that service, but a few of the fees were adjusted to better capture more of the city's, well, they were reduced to avoid overburdening business owners in some cases. So for instance, the initial first-time business license base fee was adjusted down from the actual cost of $492, and it was reduced down with a subsidy to $162. And this was justified in order to not create such a burden for first-time businesses. Within the fee schedule, staff created a new fee, which is the commercial business license renewal fee. This is a fee that has never been charged, we have just been charging a flat rate, whether it's an initial business license, which with an initial, there's quite a bit of staff time that's associated with that first-time business license. There's many inspections that go into it, staff is, with all the departments are checking, my department specifically, we're checking land use, we're checking with all the departments to make sure all of the inspections and that fire and building have cleared, the building for occupancy. So there's quite a bit that goes into that first-time business license. So we wanted to separate and create a more true cost for renewals, which affects the majority of businesses. And we have over 2,000 business licenses within the city of Los Banas, which just probably about half of them are commercial or so. So it was my oversight that I did not suggest a subsidy at that time to the council, so that is why I am before you tonight, requesting that the council considered a 45% subsidy, the actual cost to process a commercial business license renewal is $235.62, and I'm asking to reduce that by 45% to $130. Currently, the fee is a base of $78, and that's what businesses have been paying since about 2009, when that fee was first set into place. And I do believe this is necessary to reduce the burden on businesses with their annual renewals, as that is a significant jump from $78 to 235 cents, and I do believe that $130 renewal is reasonable. So that concludes my staff report, and with that, I'm asking the City Council to adopt a resolution to reduce the annual renewal license fee. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, so the $135 is for 12 months, right?
It sure is.
Okay, all right. All right, so council, any comments at this time before we open the public hearing? Yes, sir. Oh, Mr. Jones, I'm sorry, go ahead.
With that, would there be plans to do annual escalators to try to eventually get it up to where it needs to be over a period of time?
I believe, and I can confirm this with Sonia, that we'll be with a cost of living adjustment possibly each year.
So when we took the original resolution to council, we said that we would bring it back on an annual basis, there's no automatic cost of living increase built in, but that we would review it because we have a whole new cost analysis program that we can plug the information and see where we need to be. So in about a year's time from when we last brought it, or probably around July-ish, we will bring it back with potential increases.
Okay, where would staff see five years from now these fees be at as far as what we are contributing to them?
So that would be dependent upon what, if the responsibilities change, because the business license program is a regulating program, and so it depends on what we would have to change. If there's not anything in the process changing, it would only escalate with the cost of living, with increases to salaries and things like that. So the, the cost analysis, part of what we did was a cost allocation plan, and that cost allocation plan will be regenerated every year with the budget to make sure we're staying on base, and the same kind of factors will go back into play, which are we still spending two hours to do this and one hour to do that, we'll reanalyze all those things on an annual basis.
Okay, at some point down the road, I'd like to see where the city's not subsidizing private business owners to perform their work at some point. And I know right now we're just too, too much of a gap to jump up to that full amount, I mean, that's just too much of a shock, and but at some point, I'd like to see us get to where we should be, so it's.
And that is the, the entire goal of the cost allocation plan and doing a citywide user fee study.
All right, thank you, guys.
Mr. Faria?
Just off roughly the total of, based on the number of businesses, licenses, say, the last two, three years, with this, with the subsidy, with the subsidy requesting, what would the total have been, what would the city have totally subsidized, you know, with a 45% with the renewals, just roughly? How many, how many business renewals do we do in a year or two?
So we have over 2,000 business licenses, active business licenses, I would say half of those are commercial, and so about 1,000 renewals.
Okay.
If I were to give you a number.
About a thou, about 1,000, so about 40, about 40, so I'm trying to do the math in my head quickly, but with a 45%, so if you say 40, say $40.
100, our engineers say 110,000.
Could you press your button, Mr. Patron?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I think, I think the difference is about $110 a license.
Per license, okay, and we're sending for 1,000 license?
1,000 license.
Okay, so $110,000 in the course of the year.
Yeah, that's about what it looks like, that's really roughly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stacy, what criteria did you use to determine that what we were charging was a burden on, on the business community?
Essentially, just purely the base rate that we've been charging for the last 10 years to the initial business license, that was a significant hike to over $465, so with that, staff had justified that it was reasonable to ask for a subsidy, and then in the instance for the renewal, also it was going from $78 to $235, a cost that businesses have not anticipated, and so staff was requesting at least in this initial year to not create such a gap.
So this was over a one-year period of time from the, the price that we were charging and, and what they were anticipating that they were going to have to pay?
Yes, so the fee will actually only be in place on December 1st, and so we have not started to charge that fee yet. The fee, though, was adopted in September, and though for the past 10 years, businesses have been at a steady rate of just paying one flat fee of $78.
Okay, so, and I understand that as a city, we can only recuperate actual costs that, of jobs that we do for the public, especially in licensing and fees. Just out of curiosity, was there a polling of any surrounding cities within the county as to what they charge based on what we're charging or asking the, the business community to pay?
No, it was purely on staff's time and processing, and the city of Los Banas, we are pretty unique in, in our surrounding area in that we do have a regulatory business license code. Most cities, it's a business license tax, and most of the cities around us have a business license tax and not a regulatory, so they don't spend the amount of time that we do processing and making sure that our businesses are safe for our community.
So they pay on the amount, amount, what they sell?
On the amount of revenue, some do.
Thank you, Stacy, for your time.
Well, I don't like that. Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, I'd rather know what, what we're paying for the year for fixed cost. So, and our business license fees haven't been raised since 2009.
That's right.
So if you figure with CPI, Consumer Price Index of what, 3, 4% a year? Would that be fair?
Probably closer to 3%.
Okay, 2 and a half to 3%, okay? And for the last 10 years, we haven't done that. And for the last 10 years, we haven't done that. Okay? So we're talking a 30% increase compounded. Okay. Okay. So at this time, what I'd like to do... Are there any more questions from council? Oh, sure. Go ahead. Sorry.
No worries. I just... I probably should have did the math here. I do apologize. For us to get up to that 235, it would probably be a good... Sometimes, a few years before we get there, correct? And so we are suggesting the 130. So as of... According to... I just want to clarify. According to the study, they are recommending that we do lift it up to the 235 range or around... I'm sorry, I might be confusing that.
Yes. So the 235 is the city's actual cost to process. The subsidies were based on suggestions from staff, so not necessarily from the study.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Because you felt that increasing it to 235 was a burden on businesses?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. So with that, what I'd like to do is open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on City Council Resolution Number 6158? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And do I have a motion? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'd like to make motion to adopt the resolution as submitted.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Jones, second by Lewis to approve City Council Resolution Number 6158. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item eight, consideration of approval of ordinance number 1177. An uncodified urgency ordinance for the city of Los Banas amending Title II, Chapter I, Article II of the Los Banas Municipal Code to amend the number of members of the planning commission. And we are going to go to Director Elms for an explanation.
Mr. Mayor, before we move forward...
Oh, yes. We'll get there. We'll get there. We'll make that correction.
When does it get made?
When we... Before we do the motion, and you'll include that in the motion.
Okay.
Okay? Is that all right?
Yeah. Whoever makes the motion, just make sure it gets included.
Yeah. Yeah. I won't forget you. Okay.
So I think I'll be presenting this tonight.
Oh, okay.
Two weeks ago, or whenever you had your last city council meeting, you adopted an ordinance which will go into effect December 7th. And what that ordinance did in part was reduce the number of...
Go ahead.
Planning commissioners from seven members to five members. That's important because in the last few months, there's been some issues where there's really only four active commissioners. And it's been a real problem getting a quorum together, because you need four as a quorum. And we really have only been able to muster three members because of illness and so on and so forth. So your ordinance that you adopted at the last meeting, part of what it did was reduce the number to five, which then only requires three members present for a quorum. That ordinance doesn't take effect till December 7th. And there is pressing business with the planning commission currently that needs to go forward in the form of a number of subdivision maps and so on and so forth. So what we're bringing to you tonight is an urgency ordinance, which would take effect immediately if you adopted it tonight, which simply would, as of tonight, reduce the number of members from seven to five. It would take effect tonight. It wouldn't be in effect until December 7th, when the ordinance that you adopted two weeks ago actually takes effect. So that's all this ordinance does. What Mrs. Lewis is referring to is a typographical error in the staff report, but that error does not follow through to the ordinance itself. I think the ordinance clearly states that what we're doing is reducing... Or proposing to reduce the commission to five members starting tonight. So I can... I'm here to answer any questions if you'd like to. The urgency is the fact that essentially, the planning commission has not been able to conduct business for approximately the last six weeks. And staff is of the opinion that it can't wait another two weeks to take care of some things that are tagged to Subdivision Streamlining Act that require us to take action prior to December 7th. So that's the urgency.
Okay.
So that there's no... Ms. Lewis is correct. There was an error in the staff report, but it doesn't follow through with the ordinance. So there's no reason to do anything in terms of the ordinance. Because it is an urgency ordinance, it requires you to waive the first reading and introduce tonight. But then you can go forward and waive the second reading and adopt tonight as well, assuming you make the findings that are in the ordinance, that there's an urgency to adopt this tonight. And I'm here to answer any questions.
So are we just saying we're going to waive the reading and adopt then?
So you would do everything you normally do, except we're going to do it all in one night as opposed to separating it by five days and do it in two separate months?
And so no... The way the reading of the first and second reading?
So there'll be a... So what we're asking you to do tonight, the proper process, is to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance. And assuming that's successful, waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Okay. All right. Okay. So let's do this. Any questions from council at this time before I open up the public hearing? Okay.
I would just point out Section 2 of the ordinance, Ms. Lewis, where it clearly states the planning commission shall consist of five commissioners. It was an oversight by staff in the staff report that you picked up on.
So let's go to the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
It isn't a public hearing, but you can invite the public to speak on it if you'd like to.
On this one, it wasn't... It's not a public hearing? Okay. So if there's anyone who wishes to speak on ordinance number 1177? Would you like to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone? Okay. So let's go to consideration of approval of ordinance number 1177. An uncodified urgency ordinance of the city of Los Banas amending Title II, Chapter II, Article II of the Los Banas Municipal Code to amend the number of members of the planning commission. Okay? So do I have a motion?
To waive the first reading.
To waive the first reading. Okay? Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1177 and introduce...
Two separate motions.
The two separate motions? Okay.
Okay. So do I have a second? Mr. Freya?
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1177. Motion by Lewis, second by Freya. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Mrs. Lewis?
Mayor.
Microphone.
Yep. Let's go again. Try that. I'm just going to leave them on there. All right.
Okay. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1177 as read by title.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Freya?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta?
Yes. Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1177 as read by title.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Lewis, second by Freya to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1177. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1177 as read by title.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Freya for the adoption of 1177 as read by title. Roll call vote?
Freya?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Okay. For those students in Mr. Dela Cruz's class, with all of you, the actions that we're taking tonight are not normal actions that we take. Usually, it's cut and dry. One week, we do the waiving of the reading and the introduction. And then we have to wait a period of time, and we do the second reading and the waiving of the second reading, and then the adoption of the ordinance. Tonight, because we want to do the business of the council or the planning commission, and I'll give you a little history as to why, we had a planning commissioner. Her name is Mona Giuliani. May she rest in peace. She died a few weeks ago, and quite suddenly. And so she was a member, a valued member of our planning commission. And so when a sudden occurrence happens like this, a death, the business of the city... And it's not being that we're not in mourning, but the business of the city has to go on. And there are things that have to go on. And so what happened is that we needed to fill that position. Then we had another city council member who had a stroke. Another city council member, a planning commission member, who had a stroke. So we have a five-member or seven-member commission. And what happened was, we had people out, and then we had... We didn't have a full commission. So what happens is, we had to change the commission. The recommendation was to go from seven members to five members. And this is what we've approved for the five-member planning commission. And now we've filled the space, and that gives us a four-member commission, of which now they can carry on the business of the planning commission. With a seven-member commission, we couldn't have carried on the business, because you have to have four members present, four regular members. With five-member commission, you only have to have three members present. So now we have four, and we can carry on the business of the planning commission. All right. So let's go on to item nine, consideration of appointment to planning commission, one vacancy. And Director Elms?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So the previous item leads us into this item, which staff at the last city council meeting asked, based on the emergency situation that the planning commission was in, to dispense of the regular advertisement process of filling a vacancy and allowing staff to accept applications and propose a name forward to the council for consideration. So staff accepted applications for the past two weeks. And we did receive... The city clerk received five applications, one of which was ineligible, as that applicant did not live within the incorporated city limits of the city of Los Banas. So with the four eligible applicants, three of which lived in... Live in District 4 and won in District 1, which already has a representative. So based on the applications received, I am proposing to bring forward the name of Catherine Yuli. She is a longtime resident of the city of Los Banas for 27 years. She is a licensed real estate agent, so she has a knowledge of land use and development within her career. And she has been previously interviewed for a position on the planning commission, just at the time we didn't have the amount of vacancies to place her on the commission. So with that, staff is requesting that the council would consider Catherine Yuli, and she's here tonight.
Thank you. Council, any discussion? Motion?
I have discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay. Can you press the button?
Well, the lights on.
Is it on? Okay. Go ahead and press it again, please. Thank you. There we go.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to congratulate Mrs. Yuli on her appointment. And I finally have someone in my district representing District 4. And I think she's very highly qualified, and she's going to bring some very good skills to our planning commission. So thank you for applying, and congratulations.
Well, we better approve her first. Okay.
She'll be approved.
Watch that. Okay. Mrs. Lewis, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I will.
All right.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the appointment of Mrs. Catherine Yuli to the planning commission.
Mr. Freya?
I would gladly second that motion.
Okay. It's been motioned by Lewis, second by Freya, to approve Catherine Yuli... Kathy Yuli to the... To fill the vacant position on the planning commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Congratulations now.
Congratulations.
Okay. Let's go on to the new resolution. And it is, adopt a resolution authorizing the application for the receipt of Senate Bill 2, Planning Grant Program Funds. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the application and receipt of Senate Bill SB2, Planning Grant Program Funds. And the resolution number is 6160. Okay? Any further discussion on that?
I could give a report if the council would like, at the pleasure of the council.
Counsel? Anything else? Would you?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This particular item is Planning Grants Program Funds. And we didn't want to let this opportunity pass us by. But this is based on housing bills. There was a package of 15 bills that was signed in 2017, specifically Building Homes and Jobs Act, which was SB2, which established a $75 recording fee. Within that particular law, the funds essentially get directed into two areas. There's a state-administered program, and then there's homeless programs, and those are local programs. And this funding is directed to be administered locally for affordable housing, as well as then for state-administered house programs. Within the first year of the Planning Grant Funds, each city is entitled to Planning Grant Funds and technical assistance. This is for all cities and counties. And the funding is to help cities and counties accelerate housing production, streamline the approval of housing development affordable to owner and renter households at all income levels, facilitate housing affordability, particularly for lower and moderate income households, promote development consistent with the state planning priorities, and ensure geographic equity in the distribution and expenditure of the funds. The Planning Grant Funds, like I said, it's a non-competitive process, and it's an over-the-counter for this first year. So cities, as long as they meet that eligibility, they have to qualify for one of those projects. They are entitled to funding. And because the city of Los Banas is considered a small community, we're under 50,000, we are only eligible for 160,000. That's our max under SB2. And there are criteria to be eligible. First, you have to have a compliant housing element with HCD, which the city of Los Banas is in compliance. We had to have submitted a recent annual progress report, which we did in April of 2019. They're due April 1st every year, which we've completed. We need to demonstrate a nexus to accelerating housing production, and we need to demonstrate that the applicant is consistent with the state planning priorities. So the project that the city that we are proposing to qualify for this particular application is to fund the general plan update, 2040 Program Environmental Impact Report. This is our EIR within our general plan. And this is to help streamline residential building permits. So our EIR within our general plan is a program EIR. So it's programmatic. And essentially, projects can be streamlined as long as they are consistent with the general plan. So if awarded, the state grant, we will be provided... We would be provided funding with a no-match requirement, which is a great opportunity for the city of Los Banas. It's also non-competitive. So what... As long as we meet all the criteria, which we do believe that we meet, we should be eligible for this grant. And like the memo said during the beginning of the meeting, staff was only made aware that a resolution needed to be adopted by the city council to be eligible for application. So staff is asking that the city council adopt Resolution Number 6160, authorizing authorizing application for and receipt of Senate Bill Two Planning Grant Fund Program Funds. This would be in the amount of $160,000. And that concludes my report.
Okay, any questions from council? All right, Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. See, once this, if this is approved, once we have the grant under our possession, if someone is hoping to build, have a project that would fit under these requirements, do we, I might be missing something, but do we have a set, we have a set guidelines as to what they'll need to apply for?
No, so our application binds us to using those funds only for our general plan EIRs. We are stating that is what we will be using the funds for. I didn't say it in my report, but I will highlight that our general plan, we have been underway with our general plan update for now about two years. And the EIR alone is $168,000. So this planning grant will help cover the cost of our EIR. There will be further cycles that should be available under SB Two as the state continues to collect that $75 recording fee. This is just the first round. And we feel this is a great opportunity for the city of Los Banas to take advantage of.
Thank you.
So that means we can see if we have the chief financial officer will break loose with some funds for something else now? Because we saved 168. Okay, all right. Any other comments on item, the new item 10, Reso Six One Sixty? If not, do I have a motion? Oh, go ahead, okay.
Yes, Stacy, the EIR, that money's going to be used for a study. So is there geographical area that the city's going to be studying? Or is it when it, someone comes forward?
Exactly. So the EIR is applied to the entire city as well as its sphere of influence will be analyzed as well. And it's any time a project comes forward that is consistent with the general plan. Essentially, the general plan will have contemplated that use, that land use, and should streamline the process because we'll be able to tier that environmental analysis off of the general plan's EIR.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Faria?
You mentioned the cost of the general plan. Where does the money usually come from to do the general plan?
The general fund.
The general fund?
Yes, it does.
So we're not allowed to use any other money except general fund money to do a general plan?
We do collect a percentage of building permits. It's a very small, though, percentage, but the majority of it is the general fund.
Wow. That doesn't seem quite fair, I guess. When you consider all the other funds, especially when you're doing the building funds and everything else, why we should have to use it. And the general plan is mandated that we do. Every how many years?
We're mandated to, well, we're suggested to update every 10 years. It's a projection typically looking to 20 to 25 years in the future. And ours will be, this year is our 10th year with this particular general plan, our 2030 general plan.
All right, thank you.
And so what's the total cost of the general plan? Is it over a half a million dollars?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion? Mr. Faria?
Yes, I'd move to approve Resolution Number Six One Sixty, as read by title.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos? Okay, motion by Faria, second by Santos to approve the item that was added to the agenda. The new Reso Six One Sixty is read by title. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Item Number 11, Pioneer Road Widening Project. Received staff report and direction from city council on how to proceed. John?
I think so, thank you, Mayor. I do have a presentation, a brief presentation. So if you could queue me up, please.
Try that.
Thank you, Mayor. So before I start, I just want to make a note that my presentation relates more towards the MCAG's Merced County Association of Governments preparation of the STIP. If there are questions regarding more related to the project itself or our recent stakeholder meetings, property owner meetings, I'm probably going to have to punt over to our Public Works Director, Mark Faiton. So to a certain degree, we'll probably be tag-teaming this evening. So with that, again, some of this is a refresher for the council. You'll remember this from the November 6th meeting. MCAG is in the process of developing what's called the Regional Transportation Improvement Program. That document is developed as part of the, what's called the State Transportation Improvement Program. Unfortunately, in transportation speak, there's lots of acronyms. So I'll try not to confuse us with overuse of those acronyms. So that STIP is a budget that's developed by the state of California every five years for transportation projects. So it's a five-year budget prepared every two years. And that STIP provides funding for transportation projects in Merced County. The MCAG Board is scheduled to adopt this document tomorrow, November 21st, or at least consider adoption of that document. If it's adopted tomorrow, or when it's adopted by MCAG, it'll be submitted to the California Transportation Commission or the CTC in December. The CTC does approve the funding for projects and they're scheduled to approve or consider approval of that document in March of 2020. So I did mention that that document contains funding for transportation projects for Merced County projects. There's currently a total of about $29 million available for transportation projects. The STIP that's being considered by the MCAG Board proposes to program a little over $29 million to AME Phase One B. It does contain language to establish the Pioneer Road Widening Project as a priority for any future STIP funding. If approved, that STIP document would leave no unprogrammed funds for a Pioneer project, which could prove to be problematic and a funding challenge for the Pioneer project. Hard to read, but this is the resolution that was approved by the city council at the November 6th meeting. Essentially requests, yes, very hard to read, sorry, Mr. Mayor, requests that MCAG leave $5 million of the STIP funding unprogrammed. Also contains a couple of additions that were directed by the council. One related to safety concerns of 152, and the second related to a request to the county for $5 million of local county Measure V funds. So that resolution, just as a reminder, was adopted by the council on November 6th. So based on that council resolution, we presented, the staff presented at the Merced County Association of Governments Technical Review Board, the city council's request to leave $5 million worth of STIP funding unprogrammed. That request was not approved by the TRB. We made a motion, it did not get approved by the TRB. Subsequently, a motion was made to approve the draft STIP that contains that $29 million of funding for AME. And that was approved by the TRB. City of Los Banos staff did not vote in favor of that. So we opposed the STIP, at least at the TRB level, Technical Review Board level. We oppose that. So the governing board, MCAG governing board, is considering approval of the STIP tomorrow, which contains, again, $29 million of funding for Pioneer. So at this point, we're really looking for additional direction from the council and some direction for the mayor as the city's representative, as he attends the MCAG governing board tomorrow. We did, at the staff level, oppose the STIP based on that policy or that resolution approved by the council. And again, at this point, we're just looking for additional direction to the mayor as he goes to that MCAG board meeting tomorrow. I'm guessing there could be some questions directly related to the project, the project development process, the project study report. I'll defer to Mr. Faiton if there are those questions, design components of the project. But again, the purpose of my presentation was more focused on the STIP and the MCAG's STIP process. So with that, we're looking again for direction. We're available for questions. Both Public Works Director and myself and other staff happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Faria?
Yes, Mayor, I haven't had the public reach out to me this much in a long time. Big projects have big questions, and these are the questions that are being asked. Number one, is this a bypass? And if you take a look at the logo on Los Banas 2040, you might be inclined to think it is. Second, why do we need to cut a new north-south road from the college when we already have Volta and Ortigalita as north-south arteries to Pioneer? Third, will this project replace, displace residents along Pioneer for the widening? Four, will Pioneer be widened to the south, to the north, or will it be widened in both directions? Five, if it is widened, will there be a sound wall installed along the Pioneer corridor for the housing tracks? Particularly to the north, to the south, of course, is rural. And so those are the questions I'm getting from my constituents. And then a question I had, just, first of all, when Mr. Tarazas mentioned the TRB, Technical Review Board is the CEOs, essentially the city managers and the chief operating officer of the county. Each one of them meets together, and that's called the Technical Review Board. And that generally gives you a pretty good idea how the various entities are attending in their opinion. Now, do you remember what that vote was, Mr. Tarazas? And what the numbers and who was in favor and opposed?
Four, three. It was City of Los Banos in support of leaving $5 million unprogrammed. It was Los Banos in favor, Dos Palos in favor, Livingston in favor. Others, County of Merced opposed, City of Merced opposed, Atwater opposed, and Gustine as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's right, Mark?
Yep. Thank you very much. So the first list was the questions from my constituents. Then my question came up when you mentioned the TRB, then I had the question.
Why don't we answer those questions first? Okay, or as much as we possibly can answer those questions?
Absolutely, we have to. Absolutely. And you know, this is the thing about this project. It is a work in process and it needs this public input. And we've got to make sure we serve our citizens correctly with the money that we hope to get, if we get some here. Anyway, so the questions, I don't know if we want to read them again. Is this a bypass?
Let's take one at a time.
Okay.
Thank you. Before we get into this, all these questions were brought up during the stakeholders meeting and the public workshop. And we have a lot of individuals here, welcome, you know. Definitely, of course, majority were, huge majority were on the Pioneer, not on the State Route 152. We did them together. So some of these questions have been presented. It's a planning study, so this is the first, they're going to be looking at these exact questions. But I can answer some of them for you. The first one was a bypass. This is going to be built to major arterial city standards. How it's used, I can't dictate that, but it's a major arterial standard, which is four travel lanes in a median. So technically, that's called, we call it a major arterial. I'm not calling it a bypass. I'm sure that's one of the reasons, is you want to get traffic off State Route 152. So you can look at it any way you want, but that's one of the major reasons that this is being considered.
Thank you.
Next question?
Next question is, are we going to be, essentially, if we're planning to cut a new road north-south from where the college entrance is, why do we need, why would we need to do that when you have Volta Road going north-south and Ortigalita going north-south, both tapping into Pioneer?
And both of those options are going to be looked at by the planning study. But why it was recommended this way to begin with, the Volta route is a lot more expensive, just basic ground that you have to cover. And the route, and at the time when we talked to the college, we thought that this would be a good place to have a four-way intersection with our bike path along the creek that would lead to the college and do many things at once. It may not be that direction. Or Ortigalita is another option we can look at. We will just go, we'll go past the school and we'll also be in town after several signals. So the whole issue of having people not go down State Route 152 might be minimized. But that will be looked at. That's what, that definitely came up in every, I think we had eight groups, something like that, eight groups, and that came up in every single group, why we did that. And we just, we put a study area together and maybe it went, it may not end up being the approved study area, but we'll see.
I understand, okay.
So that's up for grabs still?
It's, well, we're still recommending the other way, but we have to look at what the planning study comes back with.
With the PSR, okay.
And then question three, will this project displace residents along Pioneer?
It's, you know, I haven't seen the right-of-way take, so I can't say 100%. It's not intended to because I don't have the right-of-way money for that. So, but there is several, several residences are very, very close. And until we see the actual layout and, you know, which side we take right-of-way from, I really can't honestly answer that.
Okay. And then with the Pioneer, you just had mentioned which side we take, would it be widened to the north, to the south, or to both? Would it widen in both directions?
What we're trying to do is where there's no home subdivisions on any side, we're going to hold the subdivisions, we're not going to go into the backyards. So that, in those areas, the majority of the right-of-way take would have to be on the south. In areas that's not developed, we would try to balance it out. So it will be a little curvilinear situation in there. If the situation for one side is taking out a home and the other side isn't, we negotiate with the homeowner, try to get on the other side, the landowner. And it's, and that's just what we'll try to do as we look at it. It will not be a straight shot, it'll be relatively straight. We'd like to be relatively straight. But it can't be in order to minimize the impact we have on existing homes and farmlands. We have to try to minimize the most we can. And the right-of-way now is looking, if you went right down the middle and split it, the right-of-way is about 20 to 25 feet on each side of where the right-of-way is now.
Okay. And that would have to be acquired, and that's part of what the money was for, is to acquire?
Part of the money is to acquire it. Now, on the south side, on the north side is where we're looking at the separated bike lane, the 10-foot bike pedestrian lane. We're not looking at a sidewalk situation on the south side. So that probably would come up with less right-of-way, maybe to the back of curb. Because we don't see much need to have that on the south side if we have a very Class One separated bike pedestrian trail situation on the north side.
On the north side.
Mr. Faria, if I may add to that. We have a Measure V, Measure V was passed. Okay, so Measure V provides funds for road construction. And so the way we separated this was east-side Measure V funds and west-side Measure V funds. So the west-side Measure V committee is made up of the mayor of Dos Palos, the mayor of Gustine, the mayor of Los Banos, and Supervisor Pereira and Supervisor Silveira. So what they did is they, by unanimous vote, programmed 8.75 or 2.5? $8.6 million approval. So that money is going to come to us for right-of-way purchase and for design. So to pay for the PSR. In addition, the Caltrans gave us a planning grant of how much money?
For that particular one, it's $220,000 of their money.
$220,000 of their money. So the money that we've garnered so far is $220,000 plus $8.6 million that will be programmed to that project.
Yeah, I'm aware of those monies and I'm aware of that, of that structure. I was at the meeting where they made those decisions.
Councilman Faria, also just to, and I know you know this, but at the last meeting, we actually did approve both the trail to the college and the Pioneer Road Widening MCAG agreement to disperse those funds.
Yes, I watched the video. I wasn't here physically, but I wanted to be here as mentally as I could with what was left to me. And so then finally, if we do build something, will there be a sound wall? Does that normally be something there?
The basic arterial, arterial that we are pushing now in every subdivision will be a sound wall with homes backing the arterial. So where we do have homes now, yes, the sound studies will put that in place. Where there's open land, no, we will not be putting a sound wall up. That will be the responsibility of if and when that land develops.
Sure. Okay, very good. So now I want to make sure I got those questions into the record because the- the record, because these questions are the questions the people have been asking.
And we'll, if it's okay, we'll, I'll just let you know, we'll also send these questions to our consultant, that they become part of their record.
Yes, very good. I want to make sure they were here in the city council, maybe, because this gets videoed and watched and recorded beyond just the workshops. And so just a couple of comments from me. The, I want to, first of all, I love the idea of a bike path running around through the college, along the creek. If you can acquire that right-of-way, it sure would be pretty. The study area includes some areas outside of the city limits. And I want to be sure that if any, if there is any traffic that's going to be redirected in any, in any large way, that any redirection junction is within the annexation of the city. Because if it's not, those redirection junctions then would, can be developed, and the city gets none of that tax revenue. And so I want to make sure, and for those that don't know, we have to put up with a lot of traffic in Los Banos. But the traffic is the price we pay for our general fund. A very large portion of the income to the general fund of the city, which is the primary funder of police and fire, your protection, comes from sales tax and property tax on Pacheco Boulevard. And if you reroute too much of the traffic, you lose, you stand to lose a great deal of that money. And if you want to call me an economic protectionist, I guess you could call me that, because my job is to protect the economy of Los Banos so that our public safety can continue to protect our citizens. And so this is a big deal with me. Also, if I, if we don't, if we already have right-of-ways in place on roads, I'd rather see those used. I'm, I love the ag nature of our town. It's a, it's our identity. We are a very important place, both economically and agriculturally. Students, for you, if you don't know, the entire water exchanges of the state of California, the entire way California agriculture deals with water, was founded in Los Banos. And so we are a very important place, and we want to make sure that we take care of our citizens. We're trying to make sure we're being as safe as we can. The traffic on Pi, on, on Pacheco Boulevard is, is a pain in the neck. But the thing is, is how do we work? How do we, we have, we have to finesse that, so that we don't lose our economy in the process. I'm glad you're all here to hear this tonight, because you're the, you're the children, you're the people going to grow up as years go by. Some of you may be sitting up here. You're going to be the ones voting. And so I'm really wondering, we had, I'm glad you're here with this, for this discussion tonight. Glad to see a lot of people in the, in the room tonight, because the more involved our citizens are in what we do, the better the job we can do to serve our citizens. So thank you for the questions, Mr. Faison, very beautifully handled, and Mr. Tarazas, very, very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freya. The, Mark, the transportation master plan?
Yes.
When was that adopted? I don't want to put you on the spot, but when was that adopted, and did it include Pioneer?
It included Pioneer, and it was adopted about 10 years ago.
Okay.
It was, it was adopted about the same time the last general plan was adopted.
Okay, okay. Council members, any other questions? Mr. Jones?
You know, I drive Pioneer probably every day, sometimes twice a day. And this is something that I've recently been split down the fence on, as far as my stance on it, just because there, there's not a big congestion on Pioneer yet. I mean, you get a little bit during school hours on Highway 165 and Pioneer, but even that doesn't back up that much. Trying to justify spending the money to go to two lanes all the way down, thinking that we're going to divert traffic off Pacheco to come use some Pioneer, it's kind of hard to tell if that would really work, because nowadays, traffic that's passing through town, they put in their GPS on where they want to go, and that's going to take them the shortest route, which is typically right through the middle of town or the state highway. So I can see if it was a true bypass, and we were changing Pioneer to now 152, and that was the new route. But it's going to be really hard to, to be able to determine ahead of time if, if this is actually going to pay off. I'm on the fence until we see the PSR and see what the, the study report has to say on this. So I, I'm really not a big fan of taking away homes or cutting off front yards, things like that. You know, if we got a traffic flow issue, I'd like to see about addressing maybe turn lanes first before we start widening into two lanes all the way down it. I just don't think we're going to have the traffic for many, many years until we develop on that south side. So I'm kind of torn on this one.
Okay. Anyone else? Santos?
Just briefly, one of my first questions, as this was coming to us, I had asked Alex, was that I wanted to make sure we weren't inconveniencing too many people out there. So I have to say, I do agree, I would like to wait and definitely will see how we go, how it goes with the, the full plan. But yes, my, my concern definitely also was the people living out there and making sure they weren't too inconvenienced by having that. But I, I definitely, I definitely think we need to get some of the traffic off of 152. I mean, I think that's, personally, I, I think that's a question to be said there. But I definitely don't want to inconvenience the people there. So I just have to say that's where I stand on that subject. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, all right. So I have some questions that I need to ask tonight, and, because that's going to tell me what the direction and the read on the council is, so then I can go and represent you the way I should. The, I went back to the 2005 report for the environmental review of the bypass, and at that time, they talked about why we needed a road around Los Banos. And at some of the intersections, we are at, in 2000, they predicted in 2013 that we would be at Level F. That was 2013. And here we are at 2019, and we are either Level E or Level F at the intersections in town. And F is the highest rating. That means full stoppage of traffic. So at that time, they said that, that 152 needed relief, and this report was done in 2005. So the original bypass was on the south side where it is now, 50 years later, where we're talking about. Then it was moved farther out to the south side. Then it was moved to the north side. The cost, and most of us, I was even in high school when they did part of this. So that's how old it is. And so there's been this jockeying around of this road. And all the time, MCAG, Merced County Association of Governments, was, which is made up of 11 members. Those 11 members include the six city mayors. So Atwater, Livingston, Merced, Dos Palos, Gustine, and Los Banos. Six mayors and five supervisors makes up the 11 board. So the Los Banos bypass was placed as the number one priority, and it was that way for almost 25 or 30 years. And through positioning, through lack of votes, the money was always programmed away, and that's what our city manager, Alex, was talking about. Another project is coming up in the county. And instead of programming money toward our project or leaving money unprogrammed, so we can find out what we need to do to help Los Banos, we're not getting that help. And yet, we were the number one project all these years. So we have two roads that go through Los Banos, 33 and 152. So tonight, we're here, it's 2019, and this was started in 1962. This project was started in 1962. And we still don't have an answer to our traffic problems. We have deaths on 152. We have, I saw the traffic predictions from 2005, and, and, you know, and what we're, what we're talking about right now. Gary, can I put you on the spot? How many, how many traffic accidents do we have a year in Los Banos? Let me...
Does it have a number?
Well, yeah.
I, I don't have that number.
You don't have that number?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I apologize.
All right, that's all right. That's all right. So at, at, one of the estimates, you know, we can get that, and, and we can, we can give that, but, but we have a problem on 152 with all the intersections. So here we are, and in 2017, by unanimous vote, the council at that time recommended that we, how do I put this? We, we go forth with the Pioneer project. And we go forth with the Pioneer project as a study, as a four-lane arterial. So the questions that I want to ask tonight, and it'll give me direction, and that will be, City Manager Tarazas, do we, do staff still believe that a, a four-lane arterial is what we're proposing to be studied in the PSR?
That continues to be our recommendation. I mean, what, what the council approved, when was that, 2017, and what the MCAG Measure V Regional Committee has approved, and what the MCAG Board has approved for funding for that $8.6 million is a four-lane arterial roadway.
Okay, thank you.
And, and again, that continues to be our recommendation.
Okay, so you haven't swayed from that. Okay. All right. So what I need to know is, I have a couple of, of, I just get a, need to get a read from the council, so I can go to MCAG tomorrow, and I can carry our wishes forward as a council. So what I'm asking is, with the, the recommendation, we passed a, a resolution stating that we wanted $5 million, which was turned down. And is the council still in support of a four-lane arterial as the primary investigation for the PSR, to carry that forward? So part of the problem with MCAG is, they say that Los Banos is never together. Los Banos doesn't know what it wants, and, and they keep changing. Well, it's not us, we're not the ones that keep changing. It's just that we never get any funds, and they're always programmed someplace else. So council, I'm, I'm kind of getting a read from you. Are, are we still in support of carrying the PSR forward and investigating the four-lane arterial? And then, the four-lane arterial, if that sort of comes back, and then the, the pathway of it, then that will be another day when, when the PSR is finished. So are we still in favor of this? Mr. Freya?
Question we had, it was, it was a, estimate was like $45 million, right, total build-out? Is that just for Pioneer? Just for a Pioneer build-out?
It's, it's a very rough estimate. No, it's for Pioneer and connecting to Ward and connecting at the college.
Okay.
The scenario that, that you proposed about being in, in, in the, in the city-owned areas and existing, it, it limits it down to one option. I'll just bring it up. It limits, limits it down to Ortega Lita and Mercy Springs.
Okay.
That's, that's the only, because everything else beyond that, we do not have control in the next area.
Right. And the, the cost of that would be what, maybe one-third or one-half off?
No, no, it's, there's still bridges and all involved. The area outside in the county areas actually is open land, very good farmland, open productive farmland, and it's easier to build a road on that than it is through areas that are existing roads.
Okay, so if we just...
Just bridges.
So just, just, if we just want to take Pioneer and, and explore the expansion of it, four-lane arterial, or if we want to expand it to, you know, three-lane with that, whatever, this exploration is about, if, from just Ortega Lita to Mercy Springs, maximum build-out, if it were four, four-lane arterial, any estimate off the top of your head about how much, what total build-out of that would be?
Well, if it was 36 million, you'd probably be in the $30 million range.
$30 million, just for that?
For the construction, yes. And, and the, and, and the specific study, the planning study can proceed and look at all these different options, and could recommend the ultimate, even though it's not built right-of-way.
Right.
But the PSR cannot do that, so.
If, if I may, part of the reason to do the PSR is to look at several alternatives. So we would be looking at what it, the, I think the RFQ said three alternatives. Mark?
Yes, and, and there's a little bit of a timing issue, because you have the specific plan going at the same time.
And the cost of that, that RFQ, the cost of that RFP?
The, of the PSR?
Yes.
It's probably going to be about over $250,000.
Okay. And so going ahead with that, we're asking, we have money for that, or we're trying to get some more money for that, is that right?
We have money for that.
We have money for that.
And if it's a little, if I've already talked to, it might be a little shy, what was allocated to that phase, we can take it from the engineering phase. We have that $8.6 million, whatever, and that goes all the way through breaking ground the first time, roughly.
Okay.
And so, and that particular RFQ is due tomorrow on the engineering services.
Okay. So I, I see no problem with pursuing, you know, the research and procuring the money to, to do that. And then we continue to work with our citizens to make sure that this works. But we go ahead and we, we get the, get that down on paper, what can be done. And then if anything needs to be pared down, then we pare it down. Or anything needs to be adjusted, we adjust it. But I would go after the money. My, just my experience, the fact that the TRB voted four, three is, I, I will estimate that you'll probably get a very similar vote when you go to MCAG.
Yeah.
Because the TRB vote is generally a pretty good predecessor, pretty good predictor of what you're going to get at the general meeting.
So I'm going to, I'm going to be specific. You're okay with staff's recommendation over in 17 and still in 19 to, to work on the, the four-lane arterial, and then it'll come back, and the PSR will guide us of what we do?
Yes, the four-lane, to pursue, to look at Pioneer and see what can be done with Pioneer, and to get, get money for those studies, and to get that, to get money for those studies, and then we're going to, that's, we're just going to keep working at that. But, and that's, that's all, and, and that's all we're going to be able to do with it anyway. We're not going to be able to do anything beyond that with the amount of money that's there. So I think there's nothing wrong with going after that amount of money, because that seems to be the most, the best place to spend that money right now, if you're going to deal with heavy traffic.
The 8.6 is ours already.
Right.
Okay.
So then, as the time goes on, that seems to be the wisest
Okay.
course of action to me.
All right. Okay, okay. Because I don't want, I don't want to mislead anybody. I won't do that. And so, so they recommended a four-lane arterial, then we'll see if it materializes with the PSR?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I think that's a good way to go.
Okay, Mr. Jones is next. I'm sorry, let me punch in again, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. Regarding the RFQ, are we seeing, are we sending it out to find what would be the best route and pathway for, to alleviate the traffic, or is it just specifically down Pioneer?
This is specifically Pioneer widening. The art, there's going to be a little bit of a timing issue, because they're going to depend on results from the specific plan, which won't quite be ready yet. So they're going to go hand in hand. The specific plan will probably do more of the route analysis, but Pioneer is the main element. We have no other east-west carrier.
Okay. I, personally, I'd like to see a PSR done on the north side as well, both, just so we can compare and see. And I, I'm not saying the north side to be a bypass, leave off the on and off ramps, make it the same design as what we would have planned on the south side.
Sorry, I didn't quite catch that. Could you please repeat it?
At some point down the road, we're going to need the north to kind of mimic what we have planned for the south, right? Because we do have quite a bit of homes out there. We do have quite a bit of traffic.
Probably in the long run, you'll need State Route 152, a similar route to Pioneer, and you'll need the bypass. You'll probably need all three in the future. You're going to need the bypass somewhere down the line, there's no question about it.
Yeah, it just seems like the cost with that is just so unreasonable. I don't think we'll ever get to that as a city. I mean, I know that's a state project, but we probably do need to see what it would take to get, even if it's a single-lane road that wraps around the north side of town, wraps all the way down around the backside of the high school, the Pacheco High, and then back to Pacheco. school, the Pacheco High, and then back to Pacheco, and that's starting from, say, Badger Flat Road. I mean, to have a PSR done, just to see what our options are, to see if it would work in the future, it seems like that would be a good option, so.
We don't have any funding for that, and that'll be another 250 or 300,000.
The other, the other thing, the, the PSR is more of a pre-engineering, it's a planning document, but it's, but it's a pre-engineering document, when you're actually, you got a, you got pretty much where you're going, and you start analyzing the engineering, the right-of-way take, and issues like that. We actually have, as our next regional project, we have down Badger Flat, and that area where people leave town, we have that road as the next one that we're looking at. But that PSR and that environmental and that planning documents beyond the trail and beyond Pioneer, because it's, it's beyond the 10-year window for funding of Measure V regional project, regional-
No, I get that, that would just be more in-house to kind of see what we can do on the, I know it's an expensive thing to look at, but-
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be in-house, it'd be out-of-house, and it would be very, very expensive, and even to initiate would be a good year to two years off to initiate that.
And that, that's fine, that it's gonna take time to do that. I mean, it's not the biggest party right now, but I think, I mean, if we're looking at taking away land and expanding Pioneer, what's to stop us from looking on the north side? I mean, it's just, we're waiting on a PSR to come back to tell us what's the smartest way to do it, the most effective way, and what's to say that is, until we get that report. So, I mean, that's just one option. I think we should address it in the near future on the north side as well. Even though we probably won't build that for many years down the road, at least we'll have a game plan, so when we bring it to the public like this, we're not stirring up everybody. We actually have some kind of facts that we can address right now on Pioneer. We don't know if we're gonna keep it one lane, or go two lanes, put stoplights in, put just stop signs, punch it all the way through to Ward. We have no idea what we're gonna do, so.
See, here's, here's part of the problem with, with doing another PSR. There's a time limit on what Caltrans will accept, because the bypass, they, they did all the engineering on the bypass, and they had it ready to go, and there was no money, and they said it was just too expensive, it was never gonna get built, that was on the north side. All the planning documents went away. So the cost for, to renew those planning documents was over $10 million, just to renew the planning documents for the north side.
But that was as a bypass, though?
Uh, yeah.
Not as, just a new road.
It wouldn't make any difference, because you're still gonna have to do a full planning document that, that it's, it would, it would be cost-prohibitive, as, as Mark said. But, you know, when that comes down to it, and, and, and eventually, in, in some point in the future, we're gonna have to do that, and I'm not opposed to it. So.
The, the other, if I might, the other issue with the road on the north side of town is, you know, funding source. I don't know what, if the roadway would be in the, in the city's corporate limits, in the county limits, so, may not be a state roadway, so it would, would potentially, the cost for that project would potentially fall on either the city, or the county, or the city and the county, and it, and at this point, I'm just not sure there's a funding source for a project like that. But, not to say that we couldn't, couldn't look at traffic patterns and evaluate the need for an, an east-west option on the north side of town, it just, we would need to go into something like that with our eyes wide open, that there could potentially not be a funding for, source for that in the future. That's all.
Well, if I may say, it doesn't seem like we have a full funding source for Pioneer either. From the numbers that I see here, we're about $26 million short off that $45 million estimate.
We do, we do have $9 million through right-of-way acquisition, the ability, with the list of potential funding sources for Pioneer, but again, is that, is that in our pocket today? No, we would definitely have some challenges in pursuing that funding.
We will never have the funding all the way through construction, we'll, we'll always, it'll always be past the PSR stage, and on the northern route that you're talking about, there was a northern route, it'd be a good time to do the, the proper procedure, do the planning first, and then the PSR, so it's not on top of each other. Because I agree with you, we don't really have definitives right now that we should have at this moment.
And, just as a suggestion, now would be the time to incorporate that northern east-to-west connector in the general plan update, and using our circulation element and providing policies within that direct the city to plan for that northern east-to-west connector, just as a suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, good, good point, Stacy, thanks for that. So I, I would suggest that as part of our general plan update, we, we could certainly take your comments, Councilmember Jones, and incorporate, incorporate that into the update.
Okay. So I would ask you, Mr. Jones, are you okay with going ahead, investigation of a four-lane arterial, and as, as staff has recommended, and bring it back and see what actually happens?
And just to clarify, there's gonna be three options that we're asking for, for on Pioneer.
My understanding is from the specific plan people, and they take direction from staff, is they'll, they'll be looking at three different options. The PSR is not gonna be, is, 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 really wants to be more definitive as to what those options are. So they'll, they'll wait till they finalize the PSR, till the specific plan has a, has a preferred alternative, and we'll have to bring it back to you and, and, and see what you, what you're preferring.
Okay, so I would say I'm on board with going forward with the PSR, just to see what, what comes about on that. And I guess once we see that, we'll have to determine if it's worth it or not.
That's what the PSR is for, but, again, I'm just trying to be clear with the audience, I'm trying to be clear with everyone of how this got started and what staff recommended, so we need to do the PSR to find out if that recommendation is gonna be good. You okay?
Yeah, let's see what will happen with that.
All right.
Let's, let's get it going.
Okay.
I just, I, I, if, if we're not gonna have the traffic flow on there that's gonna alleviate it off Pacheco, and where we're gonna take some of that and put that on Pioneer, I'm probably gonna vote no on it at that time, once we see that PSR come back. I mean, it just, I don't want four lanes there and it's not being used. You know, if we have the same amount of traffic as what we have on it right now, there's no justification for it, so.
Well, they're, they're gonna do the traffic counts, and, and I've also, I'll tell you what else, I've taken an additional step, and I've requested that Caltrans do traffic counts through Los Vanos. I've requested that, because those haven't been updated in a while. And so, we are looking at some countermeasures to help a, a flow of 152, so I've asked, I've asked the director to, to look into other options for 152, just to help us in the interim. So I'm trying to look at every option, because this is an expensive venture, but we need to take these steps to find out where we're at and, and get on board, because if we don't, what's gonna happen is that, that it'll, it'll just get sucked up someplace else, and, and Los Vanos is gonna be left with a, with the congestion that we have now and no alternatives.
Well, I will agree, we have to do something, because a lot of our traffic is from other cities along the 99 corridor that are growing like crazy, and there is a tremendous amount of traffic that's just passing through town, it's not stopping, they're not spending any tax dollars, they're just going right on through. We have to figure out something. It's just until we get the PSR report that, back that says if this would alleviate some of that traffic off Pacheco, whether it's taking local residents and moving them around on the outskirts of town, or if it would actually move some of the traffic that's just passing through on that road, that will be the big-
That's the purpose of this study.
Big determination there.
Yeah, it's the purpose of this study.
So.
Okay. You good?
Yeah.
All right. Mrs. Lewis?
I'm gonna direct my questions to Alex.
Okay.
Um, I, uh, we've received $8.6 million for design study, which is the PS, the PSR, and for land acquisition, of which we haven't done. And when I spoke to you, my question was, the mere fact that we hadn't done a PSR, was this a hindrance as to whether or not that $5 million could have been set aside for Los Vanos? The East Side has done their PSR for stage one of the Atwater Exchange, and they're proposing to use this money for the second phase of that. But, you know, just in general, it seems like we're always like 25 steps behind doing something, and to me, it seems very important if MCAG says that we're gonna get some money, that we need to get this preliminary study report done, or whatever it's called. We've, we've already voted a number of times on what we want to do, I don't know what further, further marching orders we need to give. But if we need to get this study done in order to get additional money, so that our name is on the, the list to do something, why aren't we pushing to get this study done?
We, we are, we are pushing to get the study done. We have an RFQ out for an engineering firm to prepare that project study report. Those proposals are due tomorrow, and based on the proposals, we'll be entering into a contract with an outside engineering firm to prepare that, prepare that report. So we are definitely in the process, we have a very aggressive timeline to complete that, that study, to be eligible, in order to be eligible for that STIP funding in the next cycle.
Okay. So you're saying the next cycle?
In the next cycle, correct.
So the likelihood of us getting any money in this cycle is not very high, and that's based on what Councilmember Faria said about the vote that was with the organization that you're part of.
Well, the, the primary reason that Pioneer Road is not eligible for funding in this cycle is that it does not have, have a project study report completed.
But it doesn't mean that they can't leave it unprogrammed.
No, that's not what I asked him.
Yeah.
What I asked him was the fact that we haven't done this study, and that's what MCAG has been asking for. So, we're, we're in, we're in the rears of getting this done. I know that you're on fast track trying to get it done. It's too bad that we didn't have something like this done over a year ago, so that we could move forward and, you know, be in a better demanding position for asking for money. But, you know, I don't know that we're gonna be able to force anything, and it doesn't matter what we say here tonight. If the vote up there says they're not gonna keep this money in reserve, they're gonna spend it. And the best that we can do is get this preliminary report study done, so we can move forward with a project, wherever that project is going to be.
But I want to remind council that, and it, what you say makes sense, but I want to remind council that we had all our paperwork done for the bypass.
But this is not a bypass.
No, 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 no.
It's not a bypass.
No, 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 it's not what I'm saying.
No, it's not a bypass.
It's not what I'm saying. We had all our work done for STIP funds for the bypass.
Uh-huh.
Okay. We were the number-one project.
I, I remember that.
And they took and programmed the money to the first phase of Atwater, they took it away from us, because they said it was too expensive. They took that money away from us. So PSR, or no PSR, they took the money away. Now, the reason they are able to do this second phase of AME is because the bypass wasn't built, and they're taking that money and putting it towards Phase Two.
And, and I understand-
Or Phase 1B.
I understand how that operates, because the state has already taken the bypass off, off of their list for building.
That was even before that.
But, but it's off now.
Yes.
It's off now.
Yes.
So, we have to be realistic and see things for what, what it is right now and where we're going right now. And how do we get as quickly as we can to get a rerouting for the city done, if we don't have the primary thing that's, that's in the way, which is the preliminary study report?
Right, but that does not stop, and I'll, and I'll be honest, it does not stop MCAG from leaving $5 million unprogrammed. It does not stop them. They can leave it unprogrammed, we get our PSR done, and then the money can go to us. That's, that's the difference. They can leave it unprogrammed.
Yeah, and, and I think you can make the ask, and, and that's all that we can do, is, is make the ask.
That's all we've ever done, and then that's, that's what happened.
And that's, you know, I, I don't think that any council member up here tonight is gonna deny you to make a request of MCAG to set aside that money, that unprogrammed money, but, you know.
Okay.
You know, after, after that happens, then, you know, we're still in the same position.
All right, so the, the question is, are you in favor of doing the PSR, referencing the four-lane arterial on Pioneer?
I, I, I probably would have to agree with Councilman Jones, is that, that, as I understand it from Alex, this PSR can give us some oppo, some options. Is that what I understood you to say?
Oh, I just wanted, first of all, I just wanted, did, did I answer your question, your previous question?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The, the PSR, we need to have that done to be eligible for the STIP funding, to be eligible for the STIP funding. I don't know if that answers that second question.
At the beginning, you, you indicated that the PSR would give us, you know, three options. Now, I don't know what those three options meant, maybe you need to clarify.
I, I think Public Works Director clarified that the specific plan will provide us the options, and the PSR will narrow in on a preferred alternative based on the preferred options that are identified through that specific plan process. I see Mark shaking his head yes, so I'm assuming I'm not off-base, so. Does that answer your question?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And what I'm asking is, if the preferred option ends up being a four-lane arterial, as in 2017, as this council directed staff to do, are you still in support of that?
You're asking me to vote right now, I think we have to-
No, I want direction, because I'm taking this to MCAG. And if I don't have direction, I said, why am I going there? Why, why, why am I fighting anymore to get this money? So I need to know if, if you're still in support of the staff recommendation of the four-lane arterial and doing the PSR to confirm it, or not confirm it.
Well, where I am at this time is, I want to know if there are any other options-
That's what the PSR is doing.
Yes. But you're saying that the P, the four-lane option for Pioneer, and that the P, PSR would, would gear, be geared toward that. What I'm looking at is if this PSR is going to give us any other options-
It is.
Other than Pioneer.
It, no, not than Pioneer.
Okay.
Pioneer is what we voted on in 2017, to direct staff to do that, and that's what they base spending the money on.
Then I don't know why we're asking the question anymore.
I need to know if you're still in support of this.
We've already voted on it, Michael, so, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, are, so are you still in support of it?
I, I'm, I, if there's another option, I'd, I'd like to see that.
There is no other option.
Well, there's no other-
That's not what we're investigating.
What you're investigating is the resolution that we have on the table tonight. And all I'm saying is, if there is some other option for the city of Los Vanos, I would like to be able to take a look at that option.
We're not investigating another option. We're doing the PSR based on the Pioneer Trail. That's what we're doing, and that's what we're investigating, and then, within that, the options will come up as to what the Pioneer Trail, if any, is going to be.
Got a question.
Yes, let me finish with Mrs. Lewis, and I'll answer it.
I'll defer to-
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Will the PSR tell us if it's a waste of money, if it will for sure fix our problems on Pacheco?
Between the two documents, that should be answered, but I think, I think the specific plan is really important, because it addresses these, these individuals' concerns, and the options will be, you know, it could be one lane each way, it could be this street to this street, but it's Pioneer.
Perfect, that's what I need to know, if, if it does have variables for just keeping it two-lane.
And we'll bring this back to you during the process, because we're having a, we're having 60, 70 people show up with really legitimate concerns, and we have to address those in the specific plan, which may make the PSR totally irrelevant, I heard that, thank you. But it may not too. So we're going both at the same track, but the, the specific plan is the one that I, I believe the council really has to stay up, will get, keep you up to date with it, what the input is on it, because that's the public input that we're getting.
And the specific plan is really the mechanism to, to, to hear from, from the folks that are here in the audience this evening, to help us develop the preferred alternative, so.
Sure, we're, we're gonna finish with council, and then we can, we can do that, of course.
I, I'm, I'm going to wait until I hear from the audience before I give you a statement, and just what you said, Alex, and also our Public Works Director, that the PSR will give us, you know, specific direction as to whether this is good or not good, if it's gonna be one lane or not one lane. I think we probably should have taken that direction before we voted on- before we voted on any of this kind of stuff, at least to have input put from the community. And now we're stuck in a position where we're kind of working our way backward. And that's my personal feeling.
Okay.
So I'll hold off and wait till I hear from the public.
Okay. Mrs. Johnson-Saddus?
I have to say that I would love to hear from the public, but I want to say that as the PSR wants, I would like to approve that we get the PSR, so that we can see what our options are. I don't see any other way. But I would love to hear from the public.
Okay. Absolutely wonderful. Yeah, not a problem. Okay. So I've heard from all... Oh, I haven't heard from me. So I am in favor. I want to get the PSR done. The PSR, two years ago, what we talked about is investigating a four-lane arterial. If that does not come to fruition, if it is not going to take traffic off, if it is not going to help solve our problems, the PSR will tell us that. Is that correct, Mark?
I believe the specific plan will do more of that.
Press the button.
I believe the specific plan will do more of that. But between the two documents, we'll get an answer.
Okay. All right. Then I'm for it, because I want to get an answer. But I don't want is the 8.75 million that we have that's been programmed, of the money that you put in to this document. You put $2.5 million into Measure V every year. You, the City of Los Bannos, puts $2.5 million into this document every year. We need to get that money back. All right. So if anyone would like to speak from the public, I will have you come forward, if you'd like to. Yes, come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Scott Silvera, you're District 5 Supervisor. And so I guess I want to clear up a couple things on this project. Yes, in 2017, this council, if we can go back a little bit in history, I actually was here. And so, part of that reason was is the RTIF was disbanded. The regional traffic impact fee that was collected in the county, those monies became available. They were collected to do regional traffic improvement programs. Yes, I know that Pioneer existed in our general plan document, but that's at the point where, I believe, Mayor, that's what you're talking about in 2017. It was 2016, 2017. We needed to have that on a regional projects list for it to be eligible for that RTIF money. Once it got disbanded, it was going to come back to the local jurisdictions. I know that at that time, the county had made deals with some of the smaller cities where their portion was like maybe $50,000, and it would never work on a regional project in their areas. So that's where it came in. I agree with Mr. Faison 100% in that you called it the projects, the specific plan. The specific plan is where we get to listen to our constituents. And they tell us the things that they want, that they don't want. I was at one of the workshops, and I get it, people were frustrated. I think this deal kind of got rolled out that we're plowing a four-lane arterial down Pioneer without really any input. What I want to share with those folks is, is that this, right now, we're in the stage of where we are studying what we're going to ask the PSR to study. So we're kind of, it's two separate things. The PSR is, once we have this path, that the specific plan comes up with, it talks about these couple different paths. The PSR is going to tell you the nuts and bolts of it. The PSR is going to tell you, how much is it going to cost? We have $38 million as the build for it right now. It might be 28. My guess is it might, it's probably going to be closer to 48 just to build. So we are really early in the game, and I think that we're probably talking about two different things, as far as what you're asking the MCAG Board to do versus what's actually going on with the project. And I just, I hope that clarified for some of the folks sitting behind me, that this is really early in the stage. I know that it potentially could study a four-lane, but I think that it may come back that the PSR tells you, a four-lane is not warranted. Maybe it's keep it one lane in each direction, put it center turn lane. Maybe it's improve intersections. We don't know that. We are too far and too early in the game. And then the last thing that I'll leave you with is, is that I know that we are, we have an aggressive timeline on getting this project study report done. I just, I hope that it can be done in that amount of time, because that really does change everything. And to Mrs. Lewis's comments earlier, is really, at the state level, in order to be eligible for programming, you have to have that PSR, or they call it a PSR equivalent, if it's not on a state highway. You have to have that done. So I hope that helps. But the answer to your question, I can't commit to you today that I am in favor of a four-lane down Pioneer. I can't commit that, because I need the PSR done to tell me that it's warranted. Because my example would be, is you put that on there, and it says that it's going to alleviate 1,000 cars a day off of Highway 152, and there's 30,000 going down it. Is it worth spending 40 or 50 million of taxpayer money to alleviate 1,000 cars off of Highway 152? And to the average person that's on there every day, they're going to see no difference, if it goes from 30 to 29. Now, if this deal says that it's going to take 5,000 or 6,000 cars a day, and it's local traffic, it's getting from one, then it's a different consideration. So Mayor, I can't commit to you that I'm in favor of a four-lane. I know that that's what it could be, but a PSR will definitely help us get there.
Well, I think if you know that it could be, because I don't want to lie to these folks, that it could be. And if the recommendation comes back, and all the variables come back and say that a four-lane is needed.
Absolutely, Mayor, but right now, we're too early in the game to be able to...
I'm not asking that.
Okay, thank you.
And, other than Mrs. Silvera, I didn't ask you for your, you know that too. Okay. So, again, this is the project study report. They are going to investigate a four-lane, but it may not come back as that. Just because we want it, doesn't mean that it may happen that way. But we've got to do something for traffic. We've got to do something. Who else would like to speak? Come forward. Hi.
My name is Madison Jones. I just want to start off saying that I am in favor of the four-road Pioneer. But I have a couple questions. What if, what is your backup plan if it doesn't work? And if it does work, what is your next step in to making things better for the roads?
Well, to be honest with you, we don't have a backup plan. We've gone through all the backup plans. They've all failed. And so this is the plan that we have.
Okay.
Okay? Because that's all we have for the amount of money that we're going to be able to allocate towards this project.
All right. Thank you.
Traffic is very bad on 152. So, thank you. Thank you for coming up. Yes.
Hi, Mr. Breezy. My name is Lisa Souza. I actually live out on Highway 152, out across from the college. And one of your plans is actually taking out pretty much my house, my backyard, and all of my neighbors out behind me. So when you talk about displacing families, I'm one of those families. It's me. And it's some of these people behind me that you guys are going to be displacing, or talking about displacing. People who've farmed out there all of their lives, them, their families, their families before that. And so, we weren't even invited to your meetings. We got not one letter. So when you said you invited stakeholders, I think that if we own the property, we would be considered a stakeholder. Am I incorrect in stating that? We were never invited. You know how we found out? We have friends who live on Pioneer in town. And we have friends who work for CCID. And we have friends who work in the community that let us know and said, this is happening. Did you know? No, we had no idea. We went to the workshops. And some of the things I thought were really interesting is when we talk about the bike path that Mr. Faison, I probably said that wrong, I'm sorry, he says, oh, how beautiful it'll be for a bike path to go down the creek. Have you been to the creek lately? Because I live off the creek. The dairy's off the creek. There's a boat there. I've called every entity in Merced County, trying to get the boat out of the creek. Guess what? Now there's people living in the boat. Oh, they're next to the people living in the creek. So taking your bike down there is not going to be something anybody wants to do.
I have someone who can remove the boat for you.
That would be nice. I've only asked for a year and a half. That's not the point. The point is, is that a bike path out to the college sounds like a great idea. But I also asked the project people that were there, how many bike paths have you seen on state highways? Like, when you're driving in, I don't know, Fresno, do you see a bike path on the highway there? Do you see bike paths on 99? Usually, you see the sign that says no pedestrians. And we're saying, we want our community members to walk down the highway to college. Kind of seems confusing, especially since we were asking Mr. Breezy, how many people get hit on Pacheco Boulevard already? A lot. So another one of the questions I had was the fact that you had said that there hadn't been a Caltrans to see how much traffic. But yet, we were told at the meeting, that the last meeting, that that project meeting, there was about 30,000 vehicles. So I'm wondering, how long ago was that?
I don't know the exact, exact date of the last study. But it's, right now, I would, I'm just, don't take my word for it, because I would just estimate, it could be, it could be higher. It could be as high as 35,000 cars a day, trips per day. But that's why I've asked Caltrans to get an actual number, because they haven't been updated in a while. And I don't know how long it's been.
So we're saying this?
That was their suggestion.
Okay. So we say it's not a bypass, and it's an arterial go-around.
It's not freeway grade, is that what we're talking about?
Well, if you put a roundabout, that some of them are talking about, it's not even going to be big rig grade, because there's not going to be a big rig that's going to go off of Pacheco Boulevard to go around a roundabout. So then you're going to be putting lights in. And we all know that how many accidents have been on Pioneer already. You're going to have to put lights down at every intersection. So what's going to be the draw for somebody to go straight down the road, or go off and have to stop as many times as you had to stop on Pacheco Boulevard? I mean, we go, as a community, when I want to go out to Chili's or Home Depot, I go the back way, because there's not as many stoplights. If you change that and put stoplights all the way down that road, you're not going to get that draw.
That's what the PSR is going to tell us. You know, we don't know this yet, and we have to do this project study report.
I get you keep saying you have to do the PSR.
Yeah.
But that's not the way it came across at these meetings. I mean, we keep being told, no, this, we're moving forward, we're moving forward, we're moving forward.
That's moving forward.
And you keep saying that you want our opinion, but yet you don't invite us to meetings. We have to hear from other places. So if you really want our opinion, then you need to make sure that everybody gets the information about these planning meetings, and about any other meetings that you're going to have on it.
Okay. Staff, it's duly noted with staff. Believe me.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Yes, come forward.
The problem keeps coming back. It's about money. The whole issue of this whole thing has always been about money, not just now, but all in the past. The problem I see with the Pioneer, what do we call it, the four-lane widening, it's an understatement. What we're actually doing, we're taking Chief Breezy's major headache, and we're moving it from 152 to Pioneer. Have we solved the problem? I don't think so. I think we've just moved it. I hear criticism all the time when I'm at meetings about Chief Breezy. We're lucky that he doesn't apply for hazardous duty pay. The problem is terrible, and something has to be done about it. I think the plan that we're talking about is a Band-Aid. It's just moving the project. It's not taking care of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Tino Gomez. I'll do it for you. Los Bannos.
Okay. My name's Abel Gomez. And I'm the other property owner that you plan on taking all of his property, plus my house, my mom's house, my dad's house that he grew up in. I'm third generation. 1900, we had 1,000 acres there. My grandfather died there. My dad died there. I didn't move back here just for the city to take my property. What about all these people that are moved over here 10, 15 years ago, get away from the city, hustle and bustle, nice quiet town? Where'd that town go? We got gang bangers, we got homeless people. He's got a job to do that's terrible. That problem has to be addressed, too. Everybody that lives in Los Bannos knows how to get around the problem. Everybody's right. The problem, Mr. Jones, is correct. The traffic isn't Los Bannos traffic. It's Hollister, Gilroy, San Jose, Fresno, going back and forth through there. That problem's been there for years. This city council, the one before you, the one before that, made a lot of bad decisions with the housing. Where are our jobs? Where's our industry? Where ag? Do we have a tractor dealership in Los Bannos? Dos Palos does. Gustine does. Newman does. We can't even get our equipment repaired. We've got one car dealership in town now. You buy a new Chevy, where do you got to go get it fixed? Take a day off work and go to Merced. Where's our industry? Where did you guys promise to bring stuff into us? Going to make a bypass around town? Spend the money where you need to. I'm not going anywhere. My property's not for sale. You know, going to make a bypass through my place, my wife's not here. She's in Sacramento. And boy, you guys are glad she is, because she is hot. And most of you guys know that from the meeting last time. She's not real happy about this thing, and I'm not either. My cousin's sitting here, he's not. We're on family land. You know, we've got a lot to lose. Mr. Faria says, stay on what's allocated to you guys. Stay on what's, the city's annexed to the side of the creek, the east side of the creek, not the west side. That's county. Yet you guys want to make the bypass. You guys are proposing a bypass through there. That's crap. One thing nobody is interested in, and nobody thinks about, hazmat. Guys think about that? You've got two big dairies to get through, mine and Mr. Soar's next door. Both these dairies been over 70 years. You know how much cow poop and urine is in there? How are you going to get rid of that stuff? Because you're going to have to clear it up, to clean up, to put the bypass in, or even widen the road. You know, you guys need to think about that. That's a big expense. Because you can't just move that dirt somewhere. You got to get rid of it. And a good example? Home Depot. When your Home Depot went to move, look at all the spoils and crap you had over there to get rid of from the trucking company. And that's just a small, small thing. So, I mean, and I agree with her. I find out through the grapevine. I find out because my daughter lives in town, is on Facebook. That's how we find out. I don't do Facebook. We're all out in the county. Pioneer's in the county. We're not involved in any of the city stuff. We're not allowed to vote on any of this city stuff. Yet the city's running this all down our throats.
And Abel, that hasn't happened? And so all we're going to do is...
That's what we heard at the last two things. I'm sorry.
I'm here to tell you in public that we're doing a plan, a program study report, and it may not even, I mean, Volta Road, I looked at that option too. And depending upon the cost, I'm not opposed to that. I'll tell you right now.
Okay. The workshop, the way I went through last week, you were there. Unfortunately, I didn't see you. My wife is really lucky she didn't see you. It was just like, well, this is it. The impression we all got, this is a bypass, we're going to go through here, here, here. We're going to see how much it's going to cost. Boom, it's done. That's the impression we all got.
Okay. Well, that's not the impression.
Well, that's the impression. Everybody brought processes, and your consultants did too.
Okay. So I'm telling you, that's not it.
Okay. Well, that needs to get out to the public.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hello. My name is Ron Nunez. I live, my property's right next door to Abel Gomez. And nice to know something's going to get shoved through my property without us knowing about it. Lisa's my girlfriend, my fiance, and we got no knowledge. So the people from Mr. De La Cruz's class, this is what happens when government tries to overstep their bounds. That's how I feel. And in 2017, how come we weren't having the workshops in 2017? Why? We could go north, we could go south. Now, things are being shoved down our face right now. And that's how I feel.
Okay. Nothing's been done.
Well, I know nothing's been done, but a lot's been done already, because there's already major plans going through. And the project that we went to the other day, there was a lot of people against it. And it looks like the county's against it, and I know some of you are for it. And I know some of you are for it because we, maybe the town does need some kind of, um, some ways around getting traffic off the Boulevard. So, but I thought that this is very poorly planned out. And, um, there is a, a northern section that we could have also planned out from Volta Road. Because you, you're coming through my property at the college, that's like a Band-Aid. That's just gonna shove traffic right through, I mean, right through town. It, it's not, it's not gonna, it's not gonna bypass traffic through town. You need to go way out and, and if you're gonna go around town, then go around town and be smart about what you're doing.
Yeah.
Instead of paying tech, I, I'm not, you've already said it now. It's my turn to talk now.
You can talk all you want. Yeah. I'm not saying that. I'm just here to assure you that, that going through your land is not, is, is not the, uh, the, uh, it, it's been decided on. That has not been decided on. I'm here to tell you that tonight. We're gonna do that report. You'll be involved in all that. And you will get the notification. That's all I wanna tell you, that it's the, it's not going through your land. Because tonight, it's not going through your land. We're not doing that. We're not making that decision.
The report is, it's going directly through my land. Directly through my land. So whatever he's saying is false. It's going directly through my land. So let's not, let's not, there's no joking about that. You know what I mean? It's serious to me. I'm third generation there. My parents were, my, my grandparents were immigrants. And so we worked hard. And I work hard every day. I'm going back home and I'm going back to work. I gotta irrigate. So I, you know, this is serious to me. And you guys are gonna have to pay for this as taxpayers. And a lot of stuff that I heard the other day, I, I was totally against this as a citizen. So we're, nobody's talking to us about anything. It's since two thousand and seventeen, no. How come there's no city discussions on this? You guys had a meeting on November when? Sixth? Under what? Because I've been looking at the planning commission and I didn't see anything that had Pioneer Road on it.
No, it's not under planning commission.
Oh, see?
City council.
This is, this is how things go. When, when they don't want you, when, as a landowner, they don't want you to know. And what they're gonna do to my property, they're gonna eminent domain it for, for cheap. And they're gonna, they're basically gonna steal my property from me, is what they're gonna do. Now, I'm all for, uh, moving. But what, what I think is gonna go on here is, is you guys wanna move annexation on the south side of the highway. So that way the developers can go out and develop farm ground like crazy. And, and that's kinda where I think this is all going.
We've already annexed too much land.
Well, when I talked to somebody at the other meeting and I said, are you gonna annex this up to my property? They're gonna, and that, that's pretty ambiguous to me. Kinda mean, you know.
I, I will tell you that we have fifteen hundred to two thousand lots still available in this community that were annexed before anyone on this council ever got on here.
So why don't you stay on this, on the, on the, uh, east side of the creek then? Why don't you bring an arterial road up on the east side of the creek in the city? Because in the county, in the county, we don't get to vote for any of these people up here. None of them. We get supported by Mr. Silvero over here. So we gotta go through him. So we gotta make sure he's on our side because there's only a handful of us. And we're gonna go through the Merced County Farm Bureau and we're gonna go through C, CID, and we're gonna litigate, guarantee it. So that's what we're gonna do.
Okay, okay. Let's just, but I, but the PSR when it's done. Yeah, I understand. Okay, yeah.
Good evening, my name's Mark Vero. I just have a few little points. I'm definitely against it. A lot of good points have been made. Just to let you know, I do farm twenty acres of almonds on my family property. So I myself do not have, um, I have nothing as far as land to be compensated. So I have a twenty-five year lease with my family. So let's just say we fast forward and, uh, this happens in your, in ten years. So I lose, if I lose, say, two acres or three acres or five acres of that land that I'm leasing, I have nothing to fall back on. I lost that. Now, my parents and my family may be compensated for that land, but I get nothing. So I would like for you guys to look into how the leaseholders will be affected. And I know this isn't gonna happen tomorrow, but it's not just the landowners. Another point I'd like to make is I'd like to encourage every one of you to take that drive. Look at every single property out there. We can get on Google, we can measure stuff. The best thing I would suggest for you to actually take that drive. Look at my parents' house, look at my aunt's, look at the Gomez, look at the Nunes. Just drive through there and say, how are these people gonna be affected? What is the best? We go in the south, we go in the north? What if we don't do it at all? But without visualizing this, it's really easy to sit back and make plans without physically going and getting your mindset in what's going on in the, uh, surrounding areas. Which goes back to the bike path. And, uh, I stated, I'm against it. I think it's absolutely ridiculous to have it going down there. But let's, let's go back to the creek. I'd be willing to bet that most people in this town have never been right through the creek. Cause you're on agriculture property. You're going through somebody else's property that you probably don't belong on. So the creek is full of homeless people and filth. It is filth. People are dumping tires, they're dumping shrubs. CID has to clean it. It is filth. It's just a reality. People are living in there. The boat, anyways. So I don't think we need to encourage people to take a bike path through there. And I don't think it's, um, really a good deal for the city. It's not an attraction point. And, um, I think we really need to consider that. Uh, the other thing is, I'll try to keep going really quick. How are you gonna co- uh, compensate anybody that is relocated? So if you are in a home that is, is getting wiped out and you get relocated, you move to a different property. You've been on that property for thirty, forty years. Your tax base is down here. You move to a house that is now five hundred thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars. You have what, one point one percent, one point two percent taxes? How is that person gonna be compensated? Because they were forced to move because of the new tax base? So I just would like you guys to get, to kinda think outside of the box and not just, okay, I need to take two acres of this people's property. What is just compensation or how do we do it? I would like everybody to kinda start thinking, what are the repercussions of this other than taking that dirt? And back to me, since I'm here to speak, I only farm twenty acres. If this thing because of access takes out several acres, now I have the problem, just like other people. How am I, this actually goes to bigger farmers as well. How are we gonna move equipment? How is it gonna affect us putting inputs? Buffer zones, aerial applications, stuff like that. So I have twenty acres and I, I've done all right with getting guys to come and, and harvest my crops. And I'm gonna call a guy to come harvest fifteen acres of almonds. And he's gonna say, you know what? I'm so busy right now for your fifteen, it's not worth it. Or it cuts through a gentleman's property right down, say maybe Ronnie's property. And now he's gotta irrigate on super short runs. It's not even efficient anymore. So, um, I think I've taken enough of your time. But my whole point here is to get you guys to start kinda thinking outside of the box. Thank you for having the workshop. Uh, I'm not gonna beat up on you anymore, but there is another land, major landowner, uh, that lives out of town. One of the biggest, longest runs there that, uh, was not aware of the meeting either. But, um, I look forward to talking to you guys in the, uh, next workshop. Thank you.
There're gonna be a lot of them, Mark. I promise you that. And there's no decision made. Anyone else would like to speak? Yes?
Sorry, can I please go first?
Can you pull the microphone down?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Hello, my name is Chris Hernandez. Um, I'm still a little, I just wanna ask you a question. I'm a, um, I'm still a bit confused to why some of these, um, landowners don't, didn't get the message that it might go through their, um, land. And I'm still confused why, um, there'd wanna be, um, a bike lane in, in all that. I don't know, I'm just really confused to that. To waste more money, not waste, but use the money for a bike lane when it can be used for many other resources.
As to why someone wasn't notified, I don't have the answer to that. Alex, can you answer that for me?
I mean, fir- first of all, I apologize for that oversight. We, we do, we do the best we can to notify property owners. Um, you have my commitment that we will notify you in the future. Um, and I apologize for not notifying you. So I'll take that responsibility. Ultimately, the buck stops on my desk. So I'll, I'll take that responsibility. And I'll make the commitment to work with you property owners. We, just to follow up on, on Supervisor Silvero's comments, we are very early in this process. Um, no, no final design has been made. Although, and again, I apologize if that's the impression you were left with, that there have been final decisions made on this project. There, there absolutely have not. Um, I, I know you don't trust me, you don't believe me because you don't know me. But I, there have absolutely not been any final decisions made on this project. Um, you know, sneer and snicker and don't believe me, but there have not been. They're just, they're just haven't. Um, and you have- Right. Right. And my commitment to you is, we, we, if you, we, we do have another workshop scheduled for November twelfth. Um, if you'd like to meet with us prior to that.
November twelfth.
Novem- November, that was, I'm sorry, wouldn't- Right, February fourth, I apologize. Uh, we've got another workshop scheduled February fourth. Um, be happy to schedule, uh, another meeting in, in, in front of that uh, to meet with you folks. Absolutely would, would, would be welcome to that. Um, I'll offer our staff to do that. I will meet with you. Um, we would, I would absolutely like to do that. And again, I apologize for the oversight and not inviting you. Um, and you have my commitment to work with you folks going forward. Uh, in terms of a bike path on, on the creek, I agree, the boat's there. I've been, there's not a lot of hair to pull out. I keep it generally pretty short. But I have been pulling my hair out over that darn boat for months. Trying to get that thing hauled out. And I haven't been- Um, I'll, give me your phone number. I'll come out there with you tomorrow and pull that thing out.
But that's on county land.
It is our county land. I've been working with county code enforcement to try and have that removed. I did, I'll, I'll come chat with you tomorrow about that. Uh, but in, in, in terms of a bike path on the creek, um, if you look at the creek today, you, you're absolutely right. Full of garbage, full of tires, full of an old boat. If, if you look at what that could be in the future, if, if it's restored, if it has flows going to it, it, it could be something else. And, and that's, that's kinda what we look at in terms of planning for the future of this community. What could that resource be going forward in the future for this community? And we think it could be more. Um, some folks may not agree with us, but we, we think it could be more. And we think it's worth looking at to, to potentially be something more. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Mayor, councilwomen, councilmen, my name is Frank Viera. I've lived on Pioneer for seventy-five years. My grandparents brought the property, which is about a hundred years now. And we love being out in the country. That's why I built a house out there. And it's really frustrating that the city just keeps pushing and just keeps pushing. How would you like if we decided to put a dairy in the city? You know, think about it. The prior councils and the prior mayors that were here created a fiasco. They, they made the problem. We never had a traffic problem. They created the problem. And it wasn't out of need, it was out of greed. Because somebody's got somebody's hands in somebody else's pocket. You know, it's about time to stop. Let's give our rural people the credit and leave them alone. Let them, let them live their life. I don't care what you guys do in the city. But apparently you sure care about what we do out in the county. Well, you know what? Let's separate it. You live your way, let us live our way. Please, think about it, huh? Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi, my name is Tiffany Allen. And I just have a question, or not really a question, but more of a concern. It's the fact that we are building bike paths in creeks that we don't know are kind of yucky. And that we're making highways or plans for highways in places that are kind of, you know, we haven't really thought about the people and they weren't notified and stuff like that. And I know you apologize for that. But it just seems like there's an oversight, mostly when it comes to the emotional aspect of our town. Which is like, we need to beautify places before we think about putting bike paths in them. And we need to notify people before we put roads in or we make plans. And I just, I think there's that concern for me that just seems like there's a disconnect between the council and the people. And I just wanna know if there's any plans or if there's anything we can do as the people to become more connected.
Well, um, evidently that it wasn't posted where it should have been posted as our city manager said. So that disconnect needs to be corrected. Okay? And it will be.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hey, so, um, Kathy Uli, live in Las Banas. I live in the city, but part of the thing that makes this city so wonderful to live in is the agricultural community around it. I drive on Pioneer almost every single day. It is a way that a lot of us get around town. And, um, I am really concerned that what is gonna happen if this study says that this is a great four lane bypass, bypass, not, um, arterial route. Um, east west, was that right, an east west arterial route? So if it says that that's what it is, are we talking eminent domain on a lot of the members of the county that live right outside the city for our benefit? I don't think that's right. I think that we should, um, maybe, I think that we should maybe, I, I know that it's really hard getting money out here for the west side. And I agree that we need to get our share of the money that we're paying in out here for projects out here. But I am extremely concerned about what may happen if this project looks like it would be very beneficial to the city. And what's going to happen to the folks out there in the county who live along Pioneer and work along Pioneer. Just my two cents, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Louis Olivera. I'm on behalf of, really, all these people here have made all their points. They took a lot of my thunder, so there's basically not really anything to say, except there is one, one small thing that I'm here to represent is the elderly that live on Pioneer. There's a lot of people elderly on Pioneer, and I'm not calling these people elderly back here. But a lot of, I'm just a kid. And the elderly that live out there that know about this, that actually are aware of this, their main concern is just one thing. What am I going to do? These people behind me, they have a lot more bigger problems. More issues, I'm sorry, that's going through here. But those elderly that live on Pioneer, they're, they're telling, and they're already talking to each other, of course, like Thai community does, what am I going to do? And a lot of those people live by themselves. And they don't have anybody really to take care of them, other than their neighbors that take care of them. So that's just one aspect that I, I just wanted to bring up. And I'm representing those people and just to voice their opinion because they cannot be here tonight. But a lot of these people have already, already said their piece, and that's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, not seeing, hearing anyone, I'll bring her back to council level. Okay, so the question is, are we going to go ahead with the PSR? And is there anyone who does not want to go ahead on the council with the PSR? Okay, I'm taking that, is that, it's a unanimous decision to go ahead with the PSR and investigate? Okay. Now, the next question that I have, and we adopted a resolution asking for $5 million. Staff has said that, that we were turned down, and then they made the recommendation to the TRB, the Technical Review Board, to vote against the programming of all the AME, the, the STIP money to the AME, and not leave anything unprogrammed for the Pioneer project. So is there anyone who is not on this council? Is there anyone who is not in favor of me taking a no vote tomorrow on the STIP? Okay, I'm taking that as a unanimous vote by the council that I will vote no on the STIP as it applies to Antwater-Merced Expressway. And again, ask for the programming, the unprogramming of $5 million to the project at that time. And there's no one who wants me to vote, is there anyone who wants me to vote for it? Okay. I have my direction. Thank you all for, for coming tonight. The meeting's not over, but thank you for coming tonight. And if there's something that we're not doing, we need to do it. No decision has been made. And I hope to God that, that you think that, 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 and I don't know, you know, where some of this came from, but I wanted to stop and to let you know that you're going to be part of this process. And it's, it's, nothing has been decided. It's going to take, I'm going to say at the minimum, 12 months to complete this report. 12 months. And then you will be notified, and there'll be workshops in between, because the person that we're going to hire, we don't want to waste $250,000. So you're going to be notified, and we hear you loud and clear about going through your land. Okay, let's go on to item, is there any other comment on? Mr. Freya? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to be sure, this are, the report that we're ordering done, and this isn't, this isn't having to do with you at MCAG, but the report that we're ordering having done for the Pioneer Corridor is for the Pioneer Corridor. Pioneer alone, study Pioneer, and that's it.
Right.
And that, and it's a study. Everything else stays in our hands to decide what we do with that study. That's what I need to-
We don't know what we're, what our decision is because we haven't studied it.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. And it stays within our-
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, okay.
Yes.
It's a study and nothing more.
Study and nothing more.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, thank you, Council. Let's go on to item, let's take a, I see people leaving me. Let's, let's, let's take a five-minute break. Okay, we're back. And we're back, and we're back to an empty house. Okay, so now let's go on to item 12, advisement of public notices. And there is no report. Item number 13, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor, you caught me a little off guard.
Okay.
I, I don't know, it was a little dark out there. I don't know if folks noticed the five brand-new shiny Priuses out in the parking lot. We were the recipient of grant funding from the Air District. Over about $100,000 worth of grant funding. So each of those costs will result in a, each of those cars will result in a cost of about $8,000 to the city. So about $100,000 of grant funding. Brenda Geary, Police Services Manager, really headed up that grant application process. So kudos to Brenda for coordinating that. Three of those vehicles will be used in the Police Department. Two for vital, one for a pool vehicle in the PD. And then the other two will be used as City Hall pool vehicles. So great assets for the city, and thanks to Brenda for coordinating that. All I got tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Brenda.
I already said too much tonight.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll, you weren't alone. Okay, so let's go on to report, Report and Update, the Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, and Measure V Committee. Well, I don't have anything else to say. So I, I think I'm just going to be quiet on that subject. So let's go on to item 15, City Council Member Reports. And tonight, we'll start with Mr. Freya, and we're glad you're back, and we're glad you have a voice.
No, thanks, I'm glad I have a voice too. First of all, deepest sympathies, Mona Giuliani. I wore this tie in her honor tonight. She gave it to me when she had wine styles. And it's, it's an autumn with a wine bottle on it. Mona was a dear friend. I taught her daughter, and they're very, very wonderful people. It is a tragic loss to this town. It is a tragic loss to this town and to our community. So our deepest sympathies go out to the family. On lighter notes and more positive notes, there's a lot going on in the schools these days. If you haven't been watching, our sports teams in playoffs, our agricultural program and all kinds of activities, our music and art. We had Day of the Dead art programs. We've had all kinds of different things going on. So Los Banas, it's a good place for schools. So we have, getting into the Christmas season, there's gonna be music concerts everywhere. You have the Christmas parade. My choirs will be singing at the Christmas parade, as usual. And then we have our concerts. And one is gonna be... The high school concert's gonna be on December the 10th. Junior high concert is actually gonna be on December 18th, the Creekside, which unfortunately, as a council meeting night, is the only day we could schedule. So we thank everybody for coming tonight and expressing your views and opinions. And we wish everyone a great Thanksgiving. Take care. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freya.
Thank you, Mr. Freya. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you very much. I would first like to say thank you to the family of Mona Giuliani for allowing me to attend the funeral. It was a very nice event. They've run some lovely things to say about her. So I want to thank her family for allowing me to be there. And also, congratulations to Catherine Uli. I didn't get you before you walked out the door, but congratulations there. And one final thing. I would like to, I guess, apologize to the residents who live out there on Pioneer. I believe I came off as kind of blasé as to their situation out there. And I in no way feel that way. I do not take light of their situation. And I don't know if they're gonna be watching this afterwards. But as a... I think I can say, as a council, we are very... We are... I think we're very conscious and very aware. And we feel for what you guys are feeling about your land and what's happening with that project. So I want to say that in no way are we taking this situation lightly. So I guess I just wanna start off with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I have more of a request. I'd like to get on probably before the end of January on one of our agendas to discuss design standards and review our neighborhood standards for just how we kinda... What are requirements for developers as far as, say, minimum lot frontages, sidewalk or street widths, things like that. These streets seem to be getting smaller and smaller. And I'd like to see why we're doing that and see if we can make a little bit more space between our homes again. So I'd like to at least have some sort of either workshop or study session on figuring out our neighborhoods. Because I don't think we've had a major design review in a long time for neighborhood standards, right?
So what we'll need to do is that will be a council member request. And the process is that we'll put it on the next agenda. And if we get the majority of board voting for it, then we will do that.
All right.
Okay? Got it. So please add that to the next council as a council member request. Okay? Anything else, Mr. Jones?
Nope, that is it.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make mention that on November 9th, we had a successful Boys and Girls of Merced fundraiser for Los Banas. And it looks like we're on our way to establishing a site here in Los Banas. The fundraiser, again, was successful. And I'm very happy that this will give them the opportunity to start looking for a site here in Los Banas. I think they're going to initially start at Creekside Junior High School. And from there, let's hope that they're able to find either a piece of capital already on the ground or some land where they can develop a new Boys and Girls Center for Los Banas. So kudos to all the people on the board, to our Chief of Police and everyone else who participated in selling tickets for that fundraiser and seeing that event happen. Also, on November 16th, which was this past Saturday, I had the opportunity to volunteer with our fire department and the local Red Cross for the education and installation of smoke detectors in homes. This was basically in some of the old Ranchwood homes. Let's see, I don't know all the streets, but it was in District 1. The chief went out with another gentleman and myself. And the other gentleman had done this before. And he was the educator. Chief was just kinda making sure that we were on task. And I had the drill. So he came back and told everybody Deborah wouldn't give up that drill. And I said, "Yeah, I'm the installer. That's my official job." So it was a lot of fun. And the people were very appreciative of the Red Cross coming in and offering them a product that they didn't have to pay for in order to save their homes should that come about. So that was just an excellent opportunity. And I understand this is the third year that the Red Cross has done this with our fire department. So I'm looking forward to this next year. And thank you, Chief, for working with the Red Cross to make sure that this happens. And that is my report for this evening.
Thank you. Well, everyone, let's see. Please have a wonderful Thanksgiving. And there are some exciting things happening in Los Banas. We're making some changes that hopefully will improve... Improve... Just... You know, we have a hard-working staff that's... That's with the cooperation of the council to make things better for Los Banas. And I think that's what that proves is tonight, everyone wants the best for what they want. And we all understand that. So let's just all work together and make sure we inform everybody of every move. So with that, I'm gonna go to closed session. And public employee release pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. And item B, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Paragraph 4, subsection D. Paragraph... Yeah. Paragraph 4, subsection D of the Government Code, Section 54956.9, one potential case. And if we have anything to report, we will do so when we return. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Okay, good evening everyone. We've come out of closed session on one item and then we'll return for item B if there's any action. So at this time, I would like consideration of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Los Manos concerning the industrial disability retirement of police officer Christopher Hugh. And it's resolution number 6159. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 61959 as indicated by, as...
Read by title.
As read by title.
Okay. Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Lewis, second by Santos for the adoption of resolution number 6159 as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. You?